John, before we get started, I want to remind the Select Board to speak into their mics. We've had some concerns of people trying to listen online that they can't.
So just to make sure, is this the right distance?
Is this because I've been accused of turning, so I have two mics now?
So folks, I have asked, you see, the Assistant Chair to run the meeting tonight.
I will call this meeting to order of the Select Board, November 17th, 2025, and thank you all for your patience in being around.
Do you guys want to make a motion coming out of non-public?
We were in a non-public meeting, and we'll entertain a motion to come out of non-public?
Did that. We came out of non-public, so now we're in the public section. And we need to just have the motion to reaffirm the decision that we discussed, so that the decision can be made in public. So you have to make it.
I'll make a motion to empower the town manager to negotiate with Angus Theroscher regarding the sale of, sale and rental of Depot Street, the former ambulance building.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. We'll move to the approval of minutes.
I would like to offer correction to the November 3rd, 2025, public minutes. On the final page, page six, line 258, says the meeting was adjourned at seven. It adjourned at 7:20. And with that one correction, I will make a motion to approve the public minutes as amended and the non-public minutes as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Board reports. Start.
Sure, it's easy. Conservation hasn't met since the last time we were together. Oh, wait, no, I'm wrong. We did meet. It was a relatively brief meeting, and not a lot of new business. So I think next meeting is in December, and the charge that everyone was left with was to get their notes on whatever significant activities they did as a member of the Conservation to Shirley for the annual report.
The Budget Committee met last Thursday for a good meeting, not a large agenda. We had department presentations from the library, the recreation group, and the regional organization requests. In the library report, there were some questions about what is the library doing to help us deal with the electronic era? And I thought that Kate's response was very, very good, particularly as an educator of many years. I thought she was right on the money there. And right on the money in terms of budgeting also, as was recreation. The regional requests, there were two organizations that never filed the appropriate paperwork, but other than that, the things looked very good. Thank you. Those organizations were CASA and, yes, oh, VNH, unfortunately. Thank you.
Eric?
All right, the Planning Board had a couple meetings, working on the hot grant, preparing for the forum, which was held on November 8th. Twenty-one folks from town, around town, came in and had a, provided some nice feedback on the proposed zoning changes. And then TIF also met and started discussing the floodplain study, which we had just received that day. And town staff, Ed, are going to be working on sort of three items based on that study, pursuing a FEMA map change, finding out what that would mean based on the flow estimates in the study, and then investigating what it would mean to extend that hydraulic study upstream, which would potentially even lower those flow estimates even more. And then also, just to invest, to very, begin the very beginning stages of potentially replacing the culvert that goes under the rail trail. And all of these are in, sort of, targeting, how do you eliminate or reduce the amount of floodway that you have north of the rail trail along Route 4 on Bicknell Brook? Sorry, yeah, Bicknell Brook.
The Heritage Commission has not met, and the Enfield Village Association's Town Holiday Decorating Day is going to be Saturday, November 29th. If anyone is interested in helping out, hanging the garlands and wreaths around town, get in touch with Eva.
Thank you. The Energy Committee met, working on baselines right now for electrical costs for our new buildings, Emergency Service Building and Whitney Hall. That'll be an interesting comparison as we move forward and be able to prove their value as we see bills start to come in for those new buildings as compared to what they were in the past. Community Power, we continue to have excellent representation at the state level for the community power program. We look forward to January when we will perhaps see a decline in rates. I think we move on to Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. If I can find my report, it didn't seem right, but I can get through this. First thing was the staff report. I'm happy to talk about, still, we're full-staffed, and the two staff members that we talked about, Sarah Hannan has started in the Assessing Department, and Sasha Holland has accepted the position and started as deputy clerk, who, right now, we're full-staffing there. I'd also like to let the Select Board in public know that I have received the ICMA recognition from the ICMA as a credentialed manager now. Credentialed managers, they're held to high standards of leadership and professional development following the ethics of ICMA. It takes a manager that has, has good education, most of the time a master's degree, that they show an effort in professional development, both in the past and the future. And then, again, like I said, that they comply with the ethical standards written by the ICMA. So something I've been working on for a few years now. I'm just happy to report that I've been recognized with that. So in the Land Use Department, the Planning Board, as Eric mentioned, they had a good zoning hearing for the public to come. A lot of good discussion had on that. They're ready to move forward with some, some of those zoning changes, going to legal and finalizing the changes moving forward. There's a continued site plan review hearing that'll take place this Wednesday, November 19th, at 6:30 for the Laramie Farms Development. In the zoning board, there were three hearings held last Monday. There was a six-month limited variance granted for a camper to be on a property at 994 New Hampshire Route 4. There was an exception granted for residential use on the ground floor within 600 feet of U.S. Route 4. This was an Indian River Realty, Lynn Care Building, so they'll put some housing in there. Then a variance was grounded for a roadside setback on a carport on Chilt Road. With that, we're also happy to announce that Becky Butler Finnegan has signed a lease. She called as part of this Depot Street process. She called us wanting to open a fabric and textile store. She used to be a long-term employee at Joanne's Fabrics and wants to do something similar to that. We were able to talk with her, and we've set her up with Kim Quirk, and she'll be renting the revision portion of Kim Quirk's building on Main Street. So, nice to have her come to town, and we'd like to welcome her. And then with that, on the building inspection, we have 166 permits issued to date compared to 160 this time last year, so just a little bit more than last year. And we've also been, Denise attended NHBOA training last week for overview of code changes and the National Electric Code, and we're continuing to receive septic inspection pumping invoices. Wanted to update you on DPW. One thing that you may have heard, I know it's going around a little bit, is we have entered into a partnership agreement with Hess to plow this public safety building for this year. After looking at that, getting ready for winter, there's some, you know, there's a lot of sidewalks around there, there's some curb islands, some different things that DPW wanted to work with them on, on moving snow around and seeing what, what things we may need to purchase to do it properly, and there might need to be a few, few easy modifications. So we have worked with them. I'm going to call it a partnership, because we will be supplying salt and some of those types of things that we can get at a much cheaper rate than that, to keep the cost down. It's also a building that's just a little far out from where we're normally plowing, so, you know, driving the sidewalk tractor down there, those types of things, isn't feasible, so we will need some snow blowers, those types of things. But we want to get through one winter, so we understand the, the full needs of the building and what we need to purchase. With that, let me bring up there, the brine-making machine, as we're talking about winter upkeep. The brine-making machine has been installed, and then there's a few little minor repairs and a pump that needs to be added to it to be able to use it, but we're really close to having that up and running for the winter season. Brad Donnelly, our seasonal highway maintainer, started today. So, as you guys know, he works for Pike full-time, but we have an agreement with Pike to keep him on their insurance, those types of things, and then we bring him on for the winter to help us with the snow plowing season. So we're happy to have him back. We do have an injured employee, I believe he got injured off-duty at the transfer station, but we'll be, we'll be supplementing that with DPW workers until he's back. The water system, lead service line inventory has been updated for 2025. That's something that we have to do on a mandatory basis, and the required mailings will be going out this next week. As I, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the brush and garden waste facility is closed for the season, so we will no longer be taking brush until springtime. And then Jim Taylor attended a water training at Hanover Treatment Plant last week and learned about membrane technology. Then I have, on the recreation front, basketball signups have closed for the season. I just wanted to do an update. We did work, I worked with Todd, and we had a little over 400 kids participate last year in all three sports. We, we had the soccer season, basketball season, and baseball season, and of those, 55% of the participants were Enfield children. Christmas tree lighting will be December 6th, Saturday, December 6th, at 5:30 in the evening, and give you some public safety updates. I had my manager's report written, and I have another computer down there, and for some reason it didn't. With that, this last week, on Friday, the Police Department had a state accreditation inspection. It was a kind of a pre-inspection before their final inspection early December, and they did good. So we'll be having our final dis, inspection this December, and hopefully, from there, we will be a New Hampshire accredited police department. Ranker and Sergeant Smith will graduate from K-9 school on December 4th. Police Department will be participating in the career fair at Mascoma School on the 20th. And then the Police Department, along with our other emergency services, have been really busy. The Police Department surpassed 5,000 calls for service last week. I just got an update that there'd been 32 ambulance calls and 32 fire department calls in the last 30 days. And then I am happy to announce that both the ambulance and fire department are again working with one new member for each department. We continue to add people to those two departments. That's my manager's report.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Will the first cohort of the Citizens Academy be graduating soon?
Yeah, the first, the first cohort of the Citizens Academy will be graduating this Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Did you say that, and I missed it?
I did not, so thank you. The other thing I would like to do is invite the Select Board to come to that meeting. It's Thursday, I think it's 6:30, but I will send that out to you. It is the, it is 6:30, because it's the exact same time as our Budget Committee meeting this Thursday. I will be missing it, but we will be talking about library and recreation, and then Rob will be going through some, some questions, kind of what people got out of the Citizens Academy, and then going through a graduation ceremony. So I thought it'd be nice if we had a Select Board member or two there to, to hear some of that feedback and be part of the first cohort graduating.
Where will that be?
That'll be right here in this room.
You sit?
Yes.
Great. Next on the agenda, we have a discussion about painting turtles on Crystal Lake Road. Yes, Betty?
That's fine.
Sure that we thank the DPW for attending to the repair on Crystal Lake Road. They did a phenomenal job, and we are all so grateful. I had been putting a lot of thought into the speeding on Crystal Lake Road and wanting to make sure that we didn't do double-yellow lines, which I understand has been, you know, off the agenda. But I went to Google to see if there was a chance to use a different color on the road to delineate direction of travel. And my research took me to MUTCD, which is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and it's a website which has codes and rules for the markings on roads across the United States. I looked to see if a purple line could be drawn, but purple is dedicated to the easy-pass people. While on the site, I did read that artwork, as long as it would not be dangerous, such as a 3D pothole, or a brick wall, or dead people, it's, would be allowed. So artwork is allowed. In dropping off a thank-you note to the men at the DPW for the, from the folks on Crystal Lake Road, I met with Jim Taylor and broached the topic of painting a line of turtles down the center of our road. His response was that it was creative and innovative, and while his guys would probably not want to be painting turtles, he would not stand in the way of the idea, and suggested I speak to the Select Board and/or Ed Morris. So I drove to speak to Ed, who agreed that he did personally know about the MUTCD allowing artwork and had some experience in Claremont, but felt that it might not really help with the speeding issues, as people might still drive down the center of the road anyway, even if there were signs at the ends of the road requesting drivers not to squash our turtles. But he also said that he would not squash the idea, and that I could create possibly a petition with the folks on Crystal Lake Road to bring to you. Leaving Ed's office, I happened to see David Frack, who was at the town offices, and I told him of my idea. He was actually delighted with the idea and suggested that I should contact Mascoma High School to see if there's a community service component to graduation. I do know that many colleges look favorably upon those who do community service. With his enthusiasm, I went home. However, on the way home, I recall the night last December, when I drove home from a Lebanon trivia thing, and the fog was so dense on Crystal Lake Road, I honestly don't know how I got home. In several places, there's only about eight inches between the road and a steep drop into the lake, and I was definitely afraid. And in case you don't know, which I didn't know, there are eight types of fog, and all eight can occur on Crystal Lake. So I began to create a petition by emailing, texting, and Facebook messengering as many people on Crystal Lake Road as I had information for, consisting of folks from Lock Haven Road to Algonquin Road, letting them know of my idea for a line of turtles to be painted down the center of the road, with the hopes that folks would slow down by driving in their lane, but also mentioning that in the event of fog, it would at least serve to let us know where the center of the road is. Then I contacted the guidance office at Mascoma High School. The head of the office loved the idea and gave me the email addresses for the art teacher and the gentleman who heads up community service there. They both wrote back immediately enthusiastically and believed that the kids would love to spray paint stencil turtles on our road and are awaiting a positive response from the Select Board before we collaborate further. In the first 24 hours of contact, 22 people wrote back to me and had positively responded to my message. As of now, I have 37 responses, all positive. There are 13 people for whom I did not have contact information, and two people who did not respond to their emails, and one who did not respond to the Facebook message. Two people were concerned that they would still drive down the center of the road, but one of them did agree that having turtles in the middle would help guide her if there was fog. In the responses I've had, someone asked how much money I wanted to, for this endeavor. She was interested in donating. And another already suggested that her business might donate cookies for the event. Others have asked me what they could do to help. Basically, I would hope that folks would be willing to put out water for the kids to come in and to use their home for providing a bathroom when needed. I did not receive any no-responses. There's a few things to consider in making this happen, but one of the things was is that I thought it does not have to happen all in one day. We would need the town to either suggest the best type of paint to use or, and/or donate paint. Most people asked if it could be reflective. We'd need the town to help either close off the road on the day of the painting, or suggest how we could keep kids safe during painting and keep drivers off the center of the road while the paint dries. And we'd need, of course, the school to supply us with permission slips, and we'd need signs at the ends of the road saying, please don't squash our turtles. I would be willing to work with the art teacher to create stencils for the kids to use and the paper to prevent overspray. But I think all of these things are doable, and it's worth trying. We would be celebrating the teens and connecting with them. We would probably get the newspaper to document the event, and it might create a unique thing in our town for everybody to be, find joy in. For these reasons, I'm asking the Board to consider allowing a line of turtles to be painted down the middle of Crystal Lake Road from Lock Haven to Algonquin Road, and to award whatever money is needed to allow for this endeavor. And what I have in addition, which I can give you, is the list of people that I thought of, and I pretty much know the people down Crystal Lake Road. The star means they responded positively to my message, or email, or whatever. And then the lines mean I just didn't know an address for them, since a lot of people are only here for a couple weeks or a month during the summer. E means I emailed, M means I messengered them, and I have a copy of the, the thing that I, the letter that I put out, both on email and texting. So I can give that to them ever.
Thank you. Your research sounds very thorough. The comments from the Board?
I guess I have a question. You did mention there would be templates, because I have this horrible feeling about how to students doing it freehand.
No, 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 it would be templates probably on Mylar, which is a stiff plastic.
Would they all be in one color?
Yeah, it would be in one color, hopefully, but the reflective color would be?
Thank you.
One thing I'd let, like to let the Board know, from our past meeting, the police chief's been working on the electronic signs that you talked about for traffic calming, and we did find a, a deal on those, where we could get four of them for $12,000. That would be on regular delineated road sign posts, so they could be pulled up and moved if we needed them to be. So that's something that he did find that we were looking at, but we have not forward with purchasing yet.
I think that it would be nice to start, like, one year is gone.
Microphone, please. It's okay.
It would be nice to be able to start, like, late April, early May, so that it could be down, the kids would still be available in school and not off in different places. I also talked to my daughter, who's a high school teacher, and she said, "I can't think of anything high school kids would take more pride in and have more fun in than spray painting a street legally."
I think it's very creative. And the only, maybe if we were going to consider striping, and then this sounds like a lot of fun. And if we have volunteers, then it's a, becomes a nice, big, community-building effort as well. It would certainly be more interesting. The only sort of possible negative would be the cost, which it sounds like there's efforts to ameliorate that for the town as well. So, I mean, what's the worst that happens? We have one road in town that's striped with turtles. That sounds pretty fun to me.
Far apart would the turtles be?
So actually, one of the things that I did was, I looked at, because I really do research pretty well. I was looking at the yellow dashed lines that are on Shaker Hill Road. I think that those, because they're so bright, they're about 10 feet apart, but I didn't ask the DPW, and I didn't go in the middle and measure, sorry. But I was thinking, maybe six feet apart, because these would be this big. I did measure the length of the road from Algonquin all the way to Lock Haven, and that's 1.2 miles. I know that one mile at six feet apart would mean 880 turtles. I was a math teacher, so we can add the point two and figure out how many. But we could, you know, make them 10 feet apart, if that's what somebody thought.
So, in a prior meeting, we got feedback from folks on Crystal Lake and Crystal Lake Association that the yellow line was not desirable, so I'm curious what the Crystal Lake Association's take on this is. I also am looking for an update. We had some traffic findings that were initial traffic findings, and then we haven't had a follow-up. So what are we finding in terms of actual speeds? I, I think, you know, the initial findings were a little surprising. There weren't really many speeders, despite what people. So I'm not opposed to it. I'm, I'm curious about that part, because I want to stay focused on the, the safety component, to me, is, is a little separate from the fun component. I think the fun component is super high. And then, just mention the fact that we suffer greatly as a town when we have to duke it out with the state every single year over the, the crosswalks. And so, just to say out loud, like, well, this is a really fun project. It's going to be a redo, redo and redo again. And so I don't want people to be discouraged when they realize they get scraped off by the plow, because we go, we go through that every year. So it's not to not do it, it's to know that this is a, would be a long-term endeavor.
I don't have the exact data with me. We could bring that back to the Select Board if they'd like to see it, but I did talk to the police chief today, and the two locations that we had the sign at actually showed less speeders than the actual data.
My feeling is, if, if you were to go ahead with the painted turtles, I do not think that should preclude purchasing the electronic that should preclude purchasing the electronic signs, as they can be used in other places also.
I'm with you on that, John.
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Regan, and I actually own two pieces of property on Crystal Lake Road, pretty significant road frontage. I was not notified of this project at all. The first time I learned about it was on Sunday morning when I looked at the agenda for the select board meeting. So I wouldn't want to rush into anything. I agree that the fun factor is high, but we need to look at the larger ramifications of this. Let's start with the speed on Crystal Lake Road. I applaud Ms. Plikka for having raised it to the select board. It's been brought up a couple of times now, a couple of different select board meetings. I appreciate the town is taking this seriously. I thought we, not we, I thought you had agreed at the last meeting that we would investigate two permanent speed indicator signs. We would use the, I think Chief Holland was here, and he said we could use those mobile speed signs in the high season. We did a test market, if you will, just a couple of months ago, but it really wasn't the busy season. So using those during the busy season, I thought, was something that was discussed.
Yeah, I just want to address that. The signs that we did find that were for, for $12,000, are the signs you're talking about that would be mounted on a post in the ground. The good things with these, just different than like the RFB ones that are bolted in place to the ground, are these go on normal like stop sign poles. So if we did need to pull them up, they could be, but they're not mobile.
Okay, great. And then the other thing I think I heard Chief Holland say was that increased patrols during the high season is something that should pay attention to as well. This is not just a Crystal Lake Road issue. We have speeding issues throughout the town. You guys know as well as I do. I don't know if there's eight particular areas or there's 15 areas, but there's a lot of them where people are just speeding. So the long-term ramifications, we need to be considering, what are we doing? Does the next neighborhood want lollipops, and then somebody else wants little foxes or something? So what would the, what would the town look like if we move forward with this? And I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying we need to think through this. Chairman Klug, you asked about, Chair Klug, you asked about the Crystal Lake Improvement Association, what our thoughts, or maybe it was Ms. Stewart. I just found out about this on Sunday. I haven't had the chance to talk to our board about it, nor has anybody else around the lake that I'm aware of become aware of this. So if they have, it's been a very limited capacity. This is, it's, it's an issue that I think we should take a little bit more time with and think through. And I wasn't aware of this website that was discussed. I thought there would probably be some state and federal regulations as to what you can put on a road and what you can't. But anyways, that's my thoughts. And I'm happy to answer any questions from anybody.
I don't have a question for you, but I have a comment that I didn't make. I don't know if this applies in this situation, but I think being thoughtful will be good. I know that every year we get mixed feedback on the scarecrows. I mean, I know they look like people, but I think it's also a factor of just like unexpected things in the road, and especially around like twilight hours. And so I just, I do think it's, I think it's a wonderful idea, but that's the first thing that popped into my head, is just like unexpected things in the road. And I thought, I even glimpsed a turtle in the middle of the road. I'd probably swerve off the road.
I think we don't really have a consensus per se, but I do hear comments from folks that they would like to see a little more consensus from the residents of the road as to the acceptability of the idea, which is extremely interesting, no question about it, and a little bit exciting. Certainly, it'd make the front page of the Valley Schnus. Any other thoughts on the board?
I would just reiterate that a project like this should be community-driven, and it's really a volunteer effort to improve their road more than it is, you know, the town striping a road if you were to go down this path.
I think there'd be some value in contacting all those or as many as possible residents who live on that road, because that is something that maybe you've gotten in touch with many of them.
The page that I gave you that has a list of names, and I apologize to Dan, I did not, what I did was, Ed told me to contact the people whose houses are on the road, and I didn't think of your property as a house because your property goes in from Lock Haven. So I apologize, I didn't know you had another house on Crystal Lake Road between Lock Haven and Algonquin. But, so I did not include you, and I'm sorry. But the names of those people are the names, because I was thinking by house. So it starts with Cheryl at the top, and that's the furthest towards Lock Haven, and it goes to her mom Carol, then it goes to, there's blank property next to me, it happens to be my cousin, so I knew whose property that was, and then mine, and then across the street, the burby. So I literally went down the road, and every asterisk was an enthusiastic yes.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, what the asterisk is.
And so at the top, it shows that there are 37 people that said yes.
Thank you.
I think we would want to hear from the Crystal Lake Association as well. It's an entity. They would certainly express an opinion from your board, as well as perhaps other members that may not have been able to attend or listen to the requests. One of the thoughts that I think comes to mind is to ask you to consider painting a half a dozen turtles on the road so that it's more of a physical reaction, people to judge.
Instead of having a whole...
No, 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 just as a, as a preliminary venture to let people in vitro look at the turtles and see what it's like.
Do we have any indication that this is actually allowable? I mean, I know the opinion is that it's allowable, but has anyone called DOT?
Not yet. We were going to come to the select board if the select board thought it was something worth work looking into. If I've already written down, then we'll talk to DOT and we'll follow up.
Because some projects that are really, seem like really nice local projects, the place they go to die is the state.
I think we have some opinions and we have some questions and a couple of things on your desk to sue, perhaps, Ed. Then we could certainly iterate at a future meeting, once we have a few more facts.
I think that sums it up pretty well.
I think that sums it up pretty well. We have a request for a property tax rebate from Regans. Ask them to come up to the mic and speak.
Thank you very much, Dan Regan. My wife Renee is with me as well. So I think you've all been provided with a packet of information. So I'd like to just give you a little bit of background from my perspective. We bought a house on 93 Algonquin Road in 1992, and we've been paying taxes on it for 33 years. Our payments have never been late. Over these years, in an effort to help preserve Crystal Lake, we've purchased numerous other properties around the lake, and the tax payments on these properties have never been late, and we've never had an issue. Just to level set, everybody, there were some things I think that may have been incorrect in your packet. There was never a barn on our property at 93 Algonquin Road. I'm pro barn. I wouldn't have ripped down a barn. I would try to repair it. We built a three-car garage with an unfinished upstairs in 2011 and 2012. We finished the upstairs into an apartment in 2017, which was used for overflow company more than anything. Our nephew in 2021 was accepted into the Colby Sawyer College Advanced RN 16-month program, and he moved in there. And then we had two additional students since then. That's a great location because they're doing their clinical at Dartmouth Hitchcock and their studies down at Colby Sawyer in London. This is a little awkward. I'm going to share with you that the town made several errors, all right? I don't want anybody to take away that I'm pointing at any individuals. These were all done by accident, but they were errors that took place. On more than one occasion, somebody was sent out to the property, apparently to record all structures. For whatever reason, these were not recorded correctly, and that happened on more than one occasion, and I don't know exactly why. The tax cards were then prepared in a very unusual manner. I have polled publicly available residential tax cards to compare the standard method of presentation of a property with one primary structure and one or more secondary structures. The tax card for our property is done somewhat differently, and it's very, very confusing. It wasn't until a very well-known real estate broker in the area looked at our tax cards and stumbled onto the issue that was identified. What we are requesting is reimbursement for the overpayment from the period of 2019 to 2024 in a total of $3,995.62. While the error was likely in effect in 2017 and 2018, we are not seeking reimbursement at this time for those years because the town got rid of all of its tax records prior to 2019. So 2017, 2018, we don't have them. I don't have them, and I checked with my accountant, and they do not have them. But this would likely be, if we did go back, 2017, 18, an additional $1,275. So what we would like to do ideally is get this settled. We are not interested in dragging this thing on. We don't want to get into a prolonged disagreement with the town. I don't think that's in anybody's best interest, and we're not here asking for that. What we are asking for is that the town recognize that some errors were made, happens, and please reimburse us the money that we have paid in excess.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
Can you have Ed just give the brief summary of what the town provided around the mistake that was made? And then I can provide a comment.
Yeah, and with the, with the barn part of that, I think when it was partially constructed, that they coded it as a barn to try to get it assessed as, as close as possible. Something I partially learned tonight, but, you know, the assessing department, when I talked to them, openly admits that they, they went through and they had some coding and some different things on the property cards. When the, when the garage with the finished upstairs was done, that the barn coating that he talked about should have been removed from the card, and it was not. The assessing department openly admits that there was this double taxation caused by a mistake that was made in the assessing.
Okay, so with that, mistakes happen. This was an assessing mistake. I've had an assessing mistake on my tax card in the past, and we should make it right by reimbursing the overpaid taxes.
My question is, does our assessor agree with these amounts?
Yes, our assessing department is the one that provided these amounts.
I think we've heard that there were errors in judgment and written errors on the assessing report, and we've certainly want to be responsible and...
I'll make a motion.
And, and take responsibility for our own department, of course. Ed Gate.
Make a motion that we refund $3,995.62 to Dan and Renee Regan for excess charges made in their tax bill for 93 Algonquin Road, map 44, lot 30.
Second that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Discussion of withdrawal from and/or deposits to capital reserves and trusts.
Let me get the screen share up. So we have deposits and withdrawals from reserves. In a town meeting in March 2025, we had the town meeting vote $579,368. We have sale of cemetery lots, which by town meeting 2018 goes to the Cemetery Maintenance Trust Fund. We had $30 worth of trail map revenue. Old Home Days revenues exceeded the expenses, so the net amount to be deposited in the Old Home Days Fund is $1,632.98. And then we recommend $25,000 be deposited into the Municipal Water System Capital Reserve Fund. This is a budgeted amount. There's no recommendation to put any funds from the budget into the Sewer System Capital Reserve Fund, as that fund is currently in a deficit.
I just want to clarify that a little bit, that we're in the same negative fund balance situation we've been in. We're not in a deficit this year, but we do have money in a capital savings account, and I felt that it was prudent not to continue putting savings away when we're a negative fund balance situation.
On the withdrawal side, we have, the first nine items are loan payments that have been going, been paid by the Capital Reserve Fund from the CIB, or Capital Improvement Program. Number eight to number three are both items that are on final payment this year. Number eight, we don't have the actual amount. It's going to be roughly $12,377. But until we pay it, we won't know how much the interest versus principal is going to be, and we'll be paying it slightly before the due date, so we get reimbursed this year. And so we might have a little less interest. So it's going to be roughly that amount. Town meeting has already approved the payments for the life of the loan, so there's no motion needed on that. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And we have, no employee and retiree benefit claims that we want to ask for this year. There's not enough money, and the budget can absorb it, and we'd rather keep the money in the fund. It's about $700. We have $569.53 to come from the Mascoma Lakeside Park Fund. We have some 2025 cruiser and outfitting expenses, which is actually less than what the select board has already approved. There's a few other items that were voted on previously. At town meeting in March of 2025, the town meeting voted to close the library building Capital Reserve Fund, which at that point had roughly $71,525 in it. It's going to be something more than that because there'll be interest, but that will be closed out. A full amount will go into the general fund. The next one, the sidewalk construction Capital Reserve Fund, discontinued as well, though the select board had voted prior year to use it all up. So there may be nothing there. It might be pennies. Whatever's in there will go to the general fund. Then a few things are going to need votes. The ballot counting machines, the select board voted in October 2024 for $6,000, but the total cost for both machines ended up being $14,000. So we're asking for a vote for half of that. Half is covered by grant, so that would be $7,000. We have some cruiser outfitting expenses for the 2024 cruiser that were incurred in early 2025, the tune of almost $22,000. We'll need a vote for the outfitting for the 2025 international dump truck. We've already pulled last year the funding for... We've already pulled last year the funding for the cabin chassis. And the other item that has not received a select board vote yet is $1,128.76, which is the net expense for fuel fund expenses in the Human Services Department. There was, there were actually two payments made for fuel assistance. The select board would like to get reimbursement from the fuel fund. It would be the total of those minus a couple of reimbursements we received. Recommended motions have been provided. The total amount coming from all funds would be $730,657.98.
Comments from the board?
Just for clarity, on the Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, I understand that when it closes, it goes to the general fund. We've already taken the action to use that to pay for the construction loan, correct?
So that was also voted in the next article to be raised and appropriated, but that's separate and doesn't require a motion at this meeting?
Correct. Yep. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding the mechanics properly, that that had already been taken care of.
Any other comments?
Do we have an idea of how much is in the fuel fund? I actually, I plead ignorance to knowing we had a fuel fund.
Roughly $6,000.
How did that money get there?
It got in there through donations, but it has not been active in a while.
That's great. Thank you.
Make a motion for the deposits. We move to approve the deposit of $579,368 into the Capital Improvement Program Capital Reserve Fund in accordance with the 2025 town meeting vote, and $25,000 into the Municipal Water System Capital Reserve Fund in accordance with the 2025 budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Withdrawals. We move to approve the withdrawal of $7,000 for ballot counting machines, $21,912.68 for 2024 cruiser expenses, $80,585.56 for 2025 dump truck outfitting from the Capital Improvement Program Capital Reserve Fund pursuant to the Capital Improvement Program 2025, 2030, and $1,128.76 from the fuel fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ed, did you want to make any mention of any of the other financial reports?
I can go through the basic financial report you guys have in front of you just to give a high-level overview, so everybody else understands it. Revenues right now are 68% of budgeted revenues. We did get a few more revenues put in since this account. But with meals and rooms, we actually got notice this week as we were tax rate setting that we budgeted for $400,000, and we got $444,000 and something. And then the block grants, I don't remember the exact number, but they were up a little bit more than budgeted as well. So from this report, we were, if we add those in, we were 89% collected, which is on target. With those additions, I'm very confident in saying that we will be slightly over, we will be over revenue from what we budgeted. And then expenditures continue to trend on track. We're below the expected percentage rate going into the end of the year. We haven't done the final calculations to see where we're going to be trending to, but we are trending below expenses. So I'm very confident in saying that we'll come in below expenses, a little bit above revenue, which is what we try to do every year. As I mentioned at the last meeting, and we'll be talking about that soon with the medical opt-out, that medical insurance is coming in under what we budgeted. A big portion of that is because of the opt-out policy that we put in place. We've had multiple newer employees coming on that opt out of insurance, which saves the town a quite a bit of money for each person that opts out of insurance. If we continue through, as you can see, total cash on hand is $3,957,750. In the general operating and sweep, about a little less than half of that, it's $1,487.95. As you guys remember, and we did put it on here, that our monthly school payment is $938,443. And then we do have a Grafton County tax payment of $1,164,426. That's due December 17th. So the 1.4 has got us really watching our cash flows on a week-to-week basis. We are looking at that. Tax rate setting is happening right now, and the tax warrant's being prepared, and the tax rate should be out. If people would look on the website, hopefully by the end of the week, your tax bills will be there. It'll take another 10 days or so for them to go through the mail processing. So hopefully in a week, week and a half, tax bills will be in mailboxes. But they will be available by the end of this week if you get those.
Do we know the tax rate?
Yeah, I don't have the number with me right on hand. I could look it up. But we were 21 cents under what we proposed on the town tax rate. And then I think Dimitri, I think he predicted $17.44, and we came in at $17.44. So we beat his town meeting prediction by one penny. But if we focus on the town tax rate, which is what we worked on with the Budget Committee, we were 21 cents under what we had proposed. So we'll get those numbers out, and I'll put a report together of where we're at and kind of how we got there moving forward. The two, the two-
Sorry, what's the expected due date? That's what people usually really want to know.
The expected due date that we're putting on there is January 15th, which will be after the beginning of the year. We do hope a lot of people pay before the end of the year, so we have some cash flow, which most people usually do do, but we do have some people that wait till the last- With that, I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory, and a lot of stuff didn't change from last month. It's fund balance. It's where we're at on those. They're in the town report every year, but wanted to make sure that they're on their sheet for you guys, and then we'll continue working on those parts. We didn't have much time to construct the under-construction part at the end, but we'll be getting you guys a chart. We might even start in January of grants we applied for and where they come in. And then we'll update the reserve accounts and things. Overall, on the treasurer's, not treasurer's report, but the tax collector report, you guys have reports in there. But I think the big story out of that is we, people continue to buy cards and register cars, and we're above budget on collection, or we're trending towards above budget on collection of our registrations. That's it, unless you guys have any questions.
I have a question on, it's page 33 in our packet. There's a bullet point towards the bottom that says health admin is over budget, but will be primarily offset by revenue from community nursing. I'm a little confused, because I thought community nursing was its own fund.
It gets paid through the general fund, but they have their own account that pays those funds. So what we ran into this year is Lebanon bills the year after. So they billed us in January for the year before. And then, as you guys know, Lebanon stopped providing that service, and we hired a contract nurse. So we're over budget in that, but we will be able to bring the money from the fundraising fund over to help offset that cost.
Okay, so health admin is still part of community nursing. That's what I was trying to say, language-
It's most of the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're still projecting that fund will have adequate funds through 2026? Or is it adequate through 2027?
It really depends the way that we have it set up right now. We had a contracted price with Lebanon, and now we're paying the nurse on a per-hour cost, and she's working a little bit less than what we were paying Lebanon. So we do have at least another year's worth in the fund, and depending on how much she works, we may have a couple of years left.
Thank you.
Do we have any news from our auditors? That's the other thing I didn't-
I guess the only news I have is they're working hard. They were able to get the MS 535 out, which is really, that's usually done right before the audit finishes. So they're fine-tuning the final books, and I'm certain we'll hopefully in the near future receive the legal letters and things that we have to get signed right before they release the audit.
And we expect to see a presentation from our auditor in December?
As soon as they get the audit done.
We're anticipating a December report from them. Is that correct?
I have not heard a date from them yet, so I don't want to say that we are. But it appears that we're really close to having it done, and as soon as it's done, I'll ask them to come in and present.
Will they be, never mind. It's fine. Thank you. Any questions from the board on that?
None from me.
I'll turn to Ed again on medical insurance opt-out policy proposal.
Let me get to that. So we had some, I'm going to call it good news on the insurance front. As you guys may have heard in the public and private sectors, that healthcare costs are going up a lot. Most of them in double digits, a lot of them in, I'm going to say higher double digits, but closer to that 20 or more percent increase. I am happy to report that with the change that we made last year, that we are receiving a 5.8% increase in healthcare, which is a lot lower than I expected. We were planning with the Budget Committee a 10% to 12% increase. So we're happy to do 5.8. As you guys know, we made a shift in health insurance last year, which saved us quite a bit of money. But our current policy was written based off our old policy, and it was a percentage of a single-person plan. So as we drive those prices down and save the town money, opt-out gets less and less and less for the employees. So I looked at some different ways to write it, but I still think the most fair way is staying with a percentage. So what I'm asking the select board is to, and I gave you three different options here. I'd like to change the standard opt-out incentive from 50% of the two-person plan, which would be a lot less than what they're getting right now, a 75% of a two, of an average single-person plan, which would be about 20, just a little over $20. I should have got the exact number for you, but it was a little over $20 per pay period for each employee. And then I'm also asking that we add, this is a new portion of the policy, what I'm calling a partial opt-out. And this is an opt-out, which would be 50% of the average single-person premium for one, like a two-person plan or a family plan, when the family or spouse opts out, but the employee stays on. And then I have some costs at the bottom of you to see there that when people are opting out, it's somewhere, even though we're paying at the maximum the 75%, up to or just under $7,000 from the town for them to opt out of our insurance, the savings to the town is still $14,000 to $19,000 a year for insurance plan. So as I stated, you know, we're well under our expenditures this year, and a lot of that is due to the increase in the opt-out. And I think continuing to fund that opt-out at a level in the $6,000 to $7,000 range is beneficial for the town. And then what we're asking tonight is to put these three sections into the policy as written.
Board comments?
Makes sense. It's saving us money.
I think it's a very good policy, and as I have mentioned previously, actually far better than some other lawyers are able to do at this time.
Absolutely.
I think when we did our compensation study, we talked a lot about total compensation. And this is part of total compensation. And we wanted to kind of peg ourselves to the middle. You don't want to pay the most, and you definitely don't want to pay the least. And I think this is something that we can do that will save us money and put some money back in their pockets. And it's a good way to leverage a total compensation tool. I'm in favor.
I think it's a very good policy. Any other questions?
No.
Do you need a motion?
You need a motion.
Need a motion? Move that we implement the medical insurance opt-out policy as written with the standard opt-out incentive, the partial opt-out for family members covered elsewhere incentive, and the opt-out when both spouses are employed by the town incentive as-
I'll second that.
No, I think that's good. I can put that in the policy. We can get that started, and then we'll bring the entirety of the policy back to you with a few other little changes that we have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Treasurer appointment.
In your packet, there's two resumes for two different people that applied to be treasurer for the town. We received one earlier, and then you guys got your packet, and we received one this week. We forwarded on to you. We had a slight discussion about those in non-public, and I just asked the board to make a motion to appoint the treasurer that they would like to appoint as the treasurer of the town. Just to remind everybody that treasurer used to be an elected position, but two years ago, it went before town meeting and was voted in to become an appointed position.
I will make a motion to appoint Terry Crete as treasurer to the town of Enfields.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Just a point of clarification. The deputy treasurer, you can take care of that without us making a motion?
I will, I will talk to that person, and if they, if they're willing to accept that, we'll come back to you at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Coincidental with this, we don't need to make a motion on the new assistant town clerk, correct?
Not at this time. That'll be coming before you as well.
Okay. We have a pro forma discussion on Laramie Farms.
Yes, so as many of you know, we've been talking with the developers of Laramie Farms for a few years now, as they've been going through their process. And we're getting close enough to the end, and I know we've had lots of discussions about whether it'd be good for the town, not be good for the town. And do I put together a pro forma? Can you pull this up? This would be good for everybody to be able to see as we go through it. Wait a minute, so we're all on the same page. And before I actually go through the numbers, I'm not going to read the whole little summary that I gave you guys. summary that I gave you guys on there, but as you guys know, Laramie Farms is proposing 222 apartments and 86 townhomes. I put 88 in there, but talking to the developers the other day, it's 86 townhomes on their land. I did attend some classes by Strong Towns at the ICMA. I think we talked about that a little bit at the last meeting. I've also read some of their books and it's, you know, it's something that I think we really need to be looking at as we, as we move forward with these developments, that high-density and infill developments are really where town's going to be on the net-positive side of things. Urban sprawl, as I would call it, subdivisions, those types of things, when the town starts taking over that type of infrastructure, you actually, you actually output more than you input from tax revenue many of the times. So, just kind of wanted to go through the costs so people can actually see it here. But, what we're projecting, we got tax revenue projections and current use projections from our assessing department. Current use one-time payment, which I did not put in this, but I did highlight up at the top so you could see it, is a payment of $558,000 on a one-time payment for the current use penalty. And then, the ongoing revenues that we expect, at least at today's current rates, is a tax revenue of $476,000 on an annual basis, or somewhere right around there. Car registrations, making an assumption that there'd be a 5% increase, based on the amount of apartments that are there and the cars that we think we might have come in, would be about $65,000 annually. Dog license, again, on a 5% increase. I don't think we'll have a full 10% increase in dogs, would be about $300. Ambulance calls, based on ambulance projections and then also my history in the, sorry. Got a dry throat. My experience in the ambulance and, and fire industry and then along with talking with our, our fire and EMS squads, we estimate revenue collection of about $5,735. That's based strictly off the percentage of the number of calls and the actual revenue we collect. And then, I added a 10% contingency on both sides, expenses and revenue, just for things we may have forgotten. That's $5,470 with a total revenue, annual revenue to the town of $552,505. As we go into the expense side, I am going to caveat the first one, the clerk. I put in an extra clerk position if we needed to hire it. I personally am not convinced that, you know, another 300 to 600 car registrations would mean another staff person. That's, I don't want to say two a day because we work five-day work weeks, but it's, you know, in the three to four a day at least. So, it's a, it's a small amount of increase. We do have elections, tax collection, other things that go in there. So, I did assume that we would add a position there, just to see what that looks like. In ambulance, we expect about a 10% increase in call volume, which is about, I think it's about 12 to 20 calls a year. That cost would be $13,580. Solid waste, there is an assumption in this that they'll provide their own trash and recycling and that's something I've talked to the planning board about a little bit. I talked to David Frack today and I've talked to the developers about that and they're, they're okay with that and they're planning on doing it, but I think that's something the town should move forward. With that, I think there'll be minimal use of the transfer station, but I added a 5% increase in there at $20,000. Elections, based on the population, again, an increased cost of $1,130. Library, I added a cost of $2,500 for the increased use in electronic media. In talking with Kate, that's a very controllable cost, so it's not a direct cost that we'd have to do, but if we kept services exactly the same as we do now on a percentage basis, it would be about that much. Again, added a contingency of $2,500 and I skipped sidewalk maintenance. That's completely due to the 800 feet of sidewalk that we've been talking about adding to the developers, making them connect our sidewalk into their development coming down the hill. So, if people wanted to walk down the hill from their development, they could walk down into our, our downtown. That cost to just, to maintain that sidewalk on an annual basis would be $1,600. So, with that, we would have a total annual expense of $112,423. I think within that contingency and little things would go for like the replacement cost of that sidewalk in 14, 15 years. It is a cost, but it's a small cost and it'd be kind of hard to put in here. So, I think within the contingency, you get those types of little costs. That gives us a total revenue of $552,505.35 and a total expense of $112,423. Again, this is just on the general fund side of town expenses and that gives a total net revenue increase to the town of $440,000, 440. So, a total percent of our current budget impact would be about 5%. Again, it was assumptions that they would provide their own solid waste, that the 800 feet of sidewalk would be put in by the developers and does not, does not include reduced costs. I'm going to, I'm going to say this, if they capture their own stormwater up there, we believe, talking with Jim Taylor, that we'll have less stormwater. That's an assumption. Other than that, all the stormwater that they have will be captured in their ponds or directed down, or which the state won't let them put. But, it will not be going into the town system. As you will see on there, there's no increased road costs. I talked through this a lot with Jim Taylor. As you know, most of our major roads through town that people will be traveling on are state roads. Then, in further discussion about, there has to be some kinds of costs in that, we replace our roads mostly due to winter damage, weather damage, not from traffic damage. So, adding another so many cars on the road is not going to, not going to decrease our wear and wear. If we move on to there, it gets a little bit harder. Did not complete the school part yet. I do have a tab and I'd like to do that. We can make some assumptions right here, but I'd rather come back to you and we can talk about those a little bit better. We do know that the, the tax revenue on the school side is just under $1 million. My assumption at this point is that we would come nowhere close to having that amount of cost in the school. As you know, the initial discussions with the superintendent is, he could do three to four times the amount of kids that they're projecting and there'd be very minimal. So, I won't go into those numbers because I don't have them right now. It is something that I want to work on. But, if we look at water sewer revenue, it gets a little bit harder, mostly on the water side, because we don't know exactly what's going to happen with water infrastructure up there. We have been talking to them about bringing some water to the table, finding water on their property or helping us with some, some other water and we'll talk about that a little bit more, but you know, that could manipulate these numbers just a little bit. But, what we're seeing in revenue is water bills of $51,344. Increased admin costs, postage, SCADA monitoring, billing, those types of things of about $5,000. Operational expenses, a 20% increase for pumping and its electricity and some other operational costs of $19,000. We don't believe we would need any more personnel to do this. We're, we're in a good spot there. Annual capital reserve, we went ahead and put that in just to help offset some of the costs of upkeep. That could be debated whether that needs to be in there or not. And then, that brings our total expense to $34,000, so total revenue of $51,000, total expenses of $34,000. Gives us a net revenue of $17,344. As I said, those, those could be a little bit variable. So, we're kind of thinking of water more as a, not a net positive, but a net straight across. The one thing that may change that a little bit is, they said if you look at the bottom assumption there, that if proposed townhouses have individual meters and ownership, revenue will be about $20,000 more. And talking with the developers last Friday, they do want those townhouses on individual meters, so we can expect probably another $20,000 in revenue, but I'm going to keep that out until we actually see that revenue come. That's what we're, we're looking at there. I'll get into the water discussion a little bit more in a minute. But, sewer revenue, we estimate sewer bills of $468,684. Admin expenses, again, about the same of $5,000. Lebanon sewer treatment costs, we're estimating at $208,080. Operational expenses, again, probably about a 20% increase, $21,161. We went ahead and put the annual capital reserve estimate in there as well and that gives us a total expense of $244,241. This is a total revenue for $68,684, total expense $244,241, giving us a net revenue increase of $224,440. Where we need some increased revenue. There are a few assumptions in there and we're actually putting together a letter for the planning board that they will have to go through some sewer development exercises, things like that with the city of Lebanon. Of course, we'll have sewer development fees and water development fees. We don't have those fully calculated yet because it really depends what we do at rate-setting time with the policy that we're getting. But, we are considering sewer revenue and the sewer fund being in a net-positive position and this doesn't actually take into full account the decrease that we may see on the water and sewer users because fixed costs are fixed costs. So, with revenue, it'll bring some of those fixed costs down with getting more people on the. With that, I think I made some recommendations in your, in your write-up there, that we made the recommendation, we could do that in a motion or however we want to do it, that the planning board does consider putting some sort of consideration in there, that the developers provide their own solid waste services. And I also think it's very important that we have them bring some sort of water to the table, some sort of capacity, be it a well on their property. I know they've talked about setting a couple well sites aside for us on their own property. I did talk to them on Friday and let them know that I would want them to do more than that, to do some water exploration and some wells, as long as working together, we can show that that, that provides the return on investment that they would need to make for a viable project. I don't think the water users and sewer users of Enfield should be paying for their development. They need to be bringing something to the table to offset what they'd be taking out of the system. Another option we have that I talked to them slightly about is Jim Taylor and our water guys have been working with the urban rural water from New Hampshire on some filtration methods for the McConnel well. McConnel well's a very good well at 140 gallons a minute, better than anything we have by far. And there's some fairly feasible filtration options for the hard water and the uranium that they have now. That may be a good second option if there is no water available on their, their property or something that they can, they can make that water usable for our system. And then, there's some other, some other things that I can talk to them about, about you know, storage capacity, pump capacity to increase pressure and the far eastern side of our system where, as you guys know, we have a little bit of a low-pressure problem. We had to put a pressure increasing pump in the public safety building just to have viable water there. So, if they can help offset some of those and bring a, a net positive to the, to the water system, it would be good for the town of Enfield. So, making those recommendations to the planning board in some capacity, I think, I think would be good, but I wanted to bring these in front of the Select Board in public so we can start having discussions about those numbers. Going to continue watching these numbers. I don't, I don't foresee them changing very much, but we'll, we'll continue thinking through things and if we, if we find anything that changes these numbers, we'll bring them back.
I think the school numbers, you know, even if we can get some kind of estimate, I know that it's a projection based on potential folks who might rent or lease one of these units and what their family structure might look like, but I think having some idea of economic impact, you know, even though we are not tied to the school board, you know, we have a strong relationship with them and I think it's important that we continue to think about impacts on all of our municipal and education resources. In terms of the solid waste, I think that one's a really smart recommendation and I am hoping that the solid waste committee is going to come back to us and give us some strong messaging on the transfer station.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. Because I, I just, you know, I feel like adding more people and more potential hours to the transfer station is a risk if we say you have trash, but you could also drive down there. That's a little bit of a challenge. We already have folks who aren't always the kindest to roll in and maybe aren't Enfield residents or not qualified to drop trash. So, I think some of those things will, will need to be played out, but I think the water is a big one, making sure they contribute a meaningful source of water.
Do you think, I say, it would be, it'd be really hard to administrate not allowing them to drive down there if they're technically Enfield residents, but I think for the development to provide dumpsters, solid waste, recycling, I would see it very hard to imagine those people loading their car up, driving all the way across town to the transfer station. They could walk right outside their door and throw it in dumpster. So, I think if we, if we push them to provide dumpsters and recycling and the things that they need to up there at their cost, not anything to do with the town's cost, I think adding in a small amount that we might see at the transfer station is, is viable and I think that's, we could accept as a down.
And I think we want them to use the paid services. We want them to put their tires, for instance, there and not on the side of the road somewhere. So, I'm not saying exclude them. I'm personally hoping that the recommendation we get is people are going to start paying to use the transfer station. We have to have the limits at some way to how people throw out trash, but that's my personal feeling. I just think this, the, the water issue, I'm not worried about having enough water. I'm worried about how it's going to be developed and how it's going to be tied in and I think it's a really, a strong recommend, it's, I, I feel that we should either issue a letter or some kind of formal recommendation to the Select Board as a top priority. Planning Board, write it as the Select Board.
Yeah, and as you guys heard, I just want to remind and everybody here might not have been there, but when Jim Taylor talked to us a couple of weeks ago about water, you know, when he started in the DPW doing this, we were using about 80,000 to 90,000 gallons a day, depending on the time of year. Right now, we're averaging in the 60,000 gallons a year. Most of that's due to water-saving appliances. We have reduced some high-water users in the system and people's habits now have changed and people are a little more water-conscious. So, with that, we're actually using quite a bit water, less water than we did 10 years ago.
I think this was a very strong analysis. I'm impressed with it. I think it gives us some facts and numbers to keep in mind as we move into the future.
Good question on page two, third paragraph. It says, "We will need to decrease the sewer water, sewer revenue slightly if townhouses have individual meters," which is what the developers have been stating they are planning. Explain to me why the sewer revenue would be less on individual meters?
I can't explain that very well. I can get an explanation from Jim, but he put that in his pro forma on the sewer side, that actual revenue would come down on individual meters a little bit. I don't, I said, "I can't fully explain it, but I can get you an answer."
Can I take a guess? Because I think it's when you, say you have a four-unit apartment building like some folks I know. If you have one, one meter for each unit, they become smaller users and so they don't get that extra.
The extra bump.
Jump. So, and it's when you take that extra jump and get, start getting payments at the higher, that would be my educated guess as somebody.
That makes a lot of sense. We have a graduated scale on the sewer system that escalates a lot faster on the water side. So, if people are using a lot of water, they get charged a higher rate, but the bigger meters would flow a lot more water than smaller meters would. But, I will still verify that with Jim and get back to you. But I will still verify that with Jim and get back to you.
I also have a comment that I agree with Kate completely, that I would like to see the solid waste removal be moved to their responsibility completely, but I'm going to add my little tidbit that I'd like to see the town move away from dealing with dumpsters, period, at all locations. That's what we should seriously consider at some point is that commercial enterprises and cluster developments, dumpsters should be on their own as far as trash removal is concerned. That having been said, make a comment on infrastructure. I have some experience with this. It is not uncommon for infrastructure development, water, sewer, even electrical for that matter, which is buried, to be a cost which although we would take it over as a level of responsibility, we certainly do not take it over until all contractor warranties have expired, but more than that, generally don't even have to be responsible for it for the first 10 years. It becomes a reimbursable expense from their homeowner association for 10 years after the warranties expire. That is a common practice among developments, so that we don't have to worry about fixing the water line two and a half years after the warranties expire. That's their responsibility. I know that we've already started on a coordination with advanced transit. I think it's important, not knowing how things are growing and not knowing how the school is changing, that we also talk about the eventuality that there could be a bus route up there for the school. I think there has to be a provision in that same pull-off that they're talking about for advanced transit, that that might end up being something that the school bus might be able to do someday. Other than that, I think it's an excellent report. The only other thing I would mention is that I'm presuming that the conserved land, which will be minimally taxed, obviously according to law, will become available to the public despite the access to it being over private roads.
You can definitely recommend that, but that has kind of been the plan, that it would be open public access.
I assume that that would be, but I'd like to make it clear that that's how the land should be accessed.
Eric may be able to speak to that better than I can.
Yeah, their plans to date have involved having a third-party conservation easement, which would include public access to trails and whatnot on that property.
Even though the traveling is over private roads, if you will.
Their current site plan includes a couple of parking spots off Maple Street before the gate at that emergency access. So that would be the public access to the trails would be from that Maple Street entrance.
And that, I think it's a very good report.
What's the best manner for us to convey our desires forward?
I have one more comment. Excellent report, I really appreciate it. On the water side, I would suggest a fairly simple metric that we could use for evaluating whether they brought water or not would be having our staff or the independent engineer that the planning board has hired evaluate what is our current capacity? And by that I mean, with our current system, we could add X number of units today. And if at the end of this project, we can still add X number of units, then they have brought the water for their project.
I also think it's a very intriguing idea that we can add the filtration to the McConnell well. That has a significant advantage to the water system. There is land out there if we needed to construct something, in terms of a filtration building, also built. So I think that's a distinct possibility.
To convey this, you can either convey to me, I will be writing a letter for the planning board, and wanted to have this discussion with you guys before I wrote that, or if you would like, you could make a motion on what you would like to convey, and I will make sure that that gets in the letter.
I think your conclusions are excellent, and I won't reiterate them, but I think as you've written them, they are definitely all-important to be passed on to the planning board, and whatever we can do to show our support for those conclusions makes a lot of sense.
I would fully agree with that.
I would add just one more thing. I feel that all of these conclusions lean towards the notion that this will not cost current taxpayers more money, water and sewer system users more money, and I think that is crucial to me because I think we should not have any of our folks who are already here in town paying this development in in any way. So it's okay to share in the cost of the system, but we shouldn't be paying extra on water. And right now, what your findings in the pro forma show are that they would not, but I want to make, I just want to parse that little piece out.
I would say that's a mandate. Cannot cost the current taxpayers any more money, and in fact, should provide them some additional revenue in needed locations, to ease the burden ever so slightly. That, I think we move on.
I had one more thing, just for the public. There's two links in this letter. I will, or we will, put those on the website for people to see. One's a little short, like 16-minute Strong Towns video, just about density and infill and how it affects your tax rate. Then there's another one by Urban Three, that's really long if you want to sit through it, but it's about an hour and 20 minutes, somewhere in there. But it's actually Urban Three, who does the Strong Towns model, but they do a lot of the modeling for them. They were actually hired by the state of New Hampshire to come in and model different cities and to show where the tax impact on the actual cities are. And we got lucky, I'm going to call the Upper Valley our area, but in this area, the Upper Valley, they did Claremont, Lebanon, and Hanover. So you can see all three of those cities and how they impact. It's not a hard stretch to really look at our smaller town and see where the tax impacts may be. So we'll go ahead and put those online so people can get to those and look at them, but they definitely truly understand the impact. As I stated at my last meeting, I took a class from Fate, Texas, who went from 5,000 population to over 50,000 in a very short timeframe. They had a really, really good presentation on urban sprawl and density and how to look at these types of developments when they're.
I think it would be great if we can put everything you've just described, as well as this report, on a single accessible location on our website so that people can have the opportunity to learn what we now know, and as it develops, there'll be further things posted to it. In about a minute, I just want to be sure we're okay with the select board on this particular topic. Select board, any further comments? We're now available for comment.
Dan Regan, first of all, I applaud the efforts. I think this is great. And I also love the fact that the select board is engaged in Laramie Farms. This is going to increase our population, as you know very well, by 15%. This is the largest project I think we've ever had as a town. And I think as citizens, we're all a little bit nervous, right? We all have seen programs from government that says it's going to deliver this, here's going to be the impact on our tax rate, here's going to be the impact in other places, and then it doesn't do that at all. So people are really worried about that. I think having the courage to put together pro forma statements is a good thing, and I love the fact that the select board is engaged and willing to sign up for this. A couple of suggestions. One would be, I have seen in my experience, anytime you're doing pro forma work, you have a list of assumptions, and you have upsides and downsides, and you actually end up with three different pro forma statements, an upside, a downside, and what you believe is to be true. The only thing that you can guarantee is that what you believe to be true is going to be wrong. It's just the degree of wrong. The one thing I saw that I think is missing is something that we call the multiplier effect. So it's not just about those 320 units, it's about all the other services that are necessary, all the other people that are necessary in order to allow that new development to thrive. So there's a percentage that needs to be added on for a multiplier effect. And you see this with residential units, as well as with businesses, as well as with, they're putting a new stadium, for instance, in a city, there's a multiplier effect. What I thought I had heard up to this point was that we should expect Laramie Farms to reduce our taxes. In looking at this, it looks like that might be possible. It could reduce our taxes by about 5%. I would love to be so bold as to request that the select board tell us what that is going to be at the end of the day, and then look back five years from now, look back and say, how accurate were we? I think that's the kind of leadership that the people in town are looking for. Also, I thought it was going to give us a reduction in water bills for those that are getting water bills, and I thought it was going to give us a reduction in sewer bills for those that are getting sewer bills because the volume was going to increase, therefore everybody else was going to drop. So getting those numbers, I think, would be helpful as well. So I remain neutral on this project, but these are the types of answers that I've been looking forward to try to make my own mind of. But thank you.
All good points. Yes.
Sharon Bofay from Enfield. Most positive thing I have to say is thank you for looking, Kate and Ed, and Tracy, for really thinking about not causing the taxpayers that are presently here more because of this development. And whether, I think the one thing we have to look at, what might we be costing water and sewer users? It's, I know people who have wells, their own wells, have their own costs, but I also feel strongly that as a community, there are certain costs for water, infrastructure, and use that municipalities have to pay for as well. Because certainly you have buildings, you have employees, and you have businesses. So it's not just the water and sewer users. It's a really hard statement for those of us who pay for our water and sewer to often hear, well, the water and sewer users are going to pay for that. It's just like having another tax that you don't have any say over. So thank you for trying to be proactive about that. Help me, a quick question hopefully, is help me to understand, I just learned that you, some of you or all of you are part of a water commission, and so therefore you make decisions about spending money for water or regulating water. I don't really understand that role for you and who has that role. Can you just briefly explain that to me?
I would think the select board, the water commissioners for the town of Enfield.
Okay, and thus, so all of you are?
Yes.
And thus, you have a certain, so what responsibilities specifically do you have for that position?
I guess we set the rates.
We are the rate setters in review of the financial aspects of water and sewer departments.
With much input from Jim and Ed.
Thank you for that. I think Enfield's at, I see Enfield at a really critical juncture because here we have Laramie Farms coming in, here we have the planning board look at zoning, you know, we're looking at density. And I think, I think of water as a glass of water with straws. Because what I think, yes, you do have to figure out, how much water do we have currently, and how much can Laramie Farms use, and then what is left over? But there's a critical piece that I think is missing, and that piece is, it's not just a fixed cup of water. Because if it is, eventually, how many straws are you going to put into that cup? Current users, Laramie Farms, how many future users? I think there's at least four projects that people have, housing projects that people have contacted, the land use planning, about imagining. And how quickly do you add that density? So either you have more people drinking from that glass of water, or you have more, in a short amount of time, you have a lot more people taking that water. And I think the critical feature for water that I think about is availability of the continued source of water in that cup. What is it? And so it's not just we have enough water today, it's do we have enough water after Laramie Farms? How much water is there? We've been in a drought situation for three of the last five years. You know that you have the problem with the McConnell well, I hope that can be solved. I'm a little concerned that if Laramie Farms searches for their own water, I don't have enough understanding, and I don't know that anyone here does, of, okay, so there's an aquifer, assuming, I'm assuming there's an aquifer on their property that they might be able to access. How is that, is that aquifer connected at all with the aquifer that feeds the marsh?
I don't want to interrupt you, Sharon, and your points are all well-taken, really. But to be fair, please bring it to a conclusion.
Yes, I will, thank you very much. My point is, how much water is feeding the marsh well that we need, and if the developer is to put in their own well, that, you know, are those connected? We need to know the answer to that question. So I just implore you that we need to know how much water do we have for how many more houses over what period of time? Because otherwise, I don't want to end up in a situation where in a moratorium for building, and I have to use bottled water in my house. So that's a responsibility that I see often. I would expect an engineer to do a study about how much water's in the ground and where can new water sources. School bus is my last point. Thank you for your patience, I do appreciate it. I think it's essential that at the pullover that the develop, Laramie Farms will have, they're going to have a pullover for cars to pull in and a place for advanced transit. I think it's essential that we plan for that bus stop from the beginning and not just, oh, you know, we're going to put it in, or we're going to make room for, some parents will drive their kids to the bus stop. There will be kids there. So thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you.
And I will just add that, you know, their engineers are looking at that. We have a third-party engineer that's overseeing their work that we've already talked to. I know they have geologists and other people.
And Eric's point is well-taken, that at some point, we'll see the engineering studies that will give us the answers that people are very concerned about, and I know it will precede the development because the developer is going to have certain obligations to provide the quantity of water that's going to be necessary for the development. So it's very intriguing that we're looking at the possibilities of an additional well, filtration systems at McConnell. There are possibilities here, and I think the, I view this as a path, if you will. All of these things are steps in the process, and I've not seen anything that will obstruct the process to the point where we need to stop and fear where we're going. I think it is a path, and it's on the right direction, at least at the moment. We have other public comments.
I'm Gerald Tice, and I'd like to just call your attention to some studies that the town paid some years ago to a company called Provan and Lorber, $185,000. And on this report, they gave you a formula calculating the amount of water necessary per home, or how many homes could be supported by a well that produced 50 gallons a minute. The data that I have gotten from the Public Works Department suggests that if Laramie Farms were occupied today, current production of water in this town would be short a well producing 78 gallons a minute. So those figures are not make-believe. They're coming directly from the Department of Public Works. I have been collecting data from the Department of Public Works for five years, showing the amount of water that has been dispensed to the homes that are on the municipal water system, and that has gone up, contrary to the town manager's comment, has gone up in terms of the amount of water that is being used for the homes that are presently on the municipal water system. The second thing is that Horizon Engineering has done is that Horizon Engineering has done a study in 2019, which they again pointed out that the town was short of water. They have now involved, been involved in a environmental review point contact by Kathy Conway, again by Horizon Engineering, that is going to cost the users $2 million when it's finally done. These are involved with the wells that were dug in 2023, which have not contributed, by the, by the own, by the Department of Public Works' own comments, much water to this system. You also should have a letter from Tim Jennings pointing out that the likelihood of filing, finding any aquifers on the property that Laramie Farms is intending to build is very low. That he doesn't believe, and he was involved with this town for some time, that there are aquifers there. The estimate of the cost for clearing the radionuclides from the McConnell well is about $200,000, a device that would allow the radionuclides to be reduced to the point where EPA would accept the water usage without diluting it. So the McConnell well, if it came online as a regular well, is going to cost at least $200,000 more to the users to clear that nuclear, radionuclides out. Those are some things that I think you need to really look at people who have made these analyses that the town has paid for. And Provan article is in the Town Safe. The Horizon Engineering stuff is online. I would also like to ask if that projection of all the revenues and so on is going to be made available so that I can get a hard copy of it.
Yes.
When?
I can make you a copy tomorrow.
When?
I can make you a copy tomorrow. We're going to post it online, too.
Great. Thank you.
Ed has already said that it will all be online.
Great. The other thing I want to mention, that I'm opposed to doing away with the transfer station. My driveway is a quarter of a mile long, and I don't think I'm going to haul garbage cans up to the George Hill for that distance. And what, if you do this, you're going to create more opportunities for people to just throw their trash in the woods.
I'm going to ask you to hold off on that particular comment, only because the committee which is studying the transfer station has not had an opportunity to report. I would really like to give them that opportunity, and that will be presented in public, obviously.
Great. Thank you.
There'll be plenty of time to comment on the transfer station.
Thank you.
No, we're open to all public comment at this point.
Could I just get a clarification from Ed? Ed, there was a statement saying that you gave an incorrect portrayal of water use. Could you get us a water use chart?
Yes.
That seems like a very easy way to tell exactly how much water has been used historically. We don't have to rely on conjecture.
First of all, I want to say that--
Your name, please.
Bill Warren. I've been in contact with Ed. I want to ensure that this board understands something that's happened. We've been doing a lot of research on our property on Shaker Hill, and it's been determined that the transfer station is largely on our property. And I mean, largely.
Oh.
And so Ed has talked about hiring Pathways Consulting. I've shown him what I've found in doing my deed research. I've looked at more deeds than you can imagine. My concern, or our concern is with the corporation. None of you that are here were here when the transfer station was expanded. The corporation that you represent need to figure out what's up there first, and then start working on what we might want to solve the problem. But serious violation of-- I've put stakes up there. If you're interested, I'd surprise how little the town actually owns.
Well, I did talk to Bill, and I've engaged the services of Pathways to look at the survey. And we'll, we'll be reporting to you as we, as we find information.
You've had, you've had it surveyed up there? Have you? Not quite yet?
This is--
It's sort of hard to talk to us about this without having done a--
We're not the ones that are at fault. You're on my property almost 200--
Without a survey--
The town is getting one. The town is getting one. We're, we're not the ones that are at fault. Just so you're aware of it. The town owns 100 by 100, and you're out there almost 200 feet.
So it's primarily in the back?
Yeah. And then there's, as Ed and I talked about, this is another confounding thing, and I have nothing to work with. In the 80s, maybe some of you remember, the town highway department straightened out Lockhaven Road. It was a piece of property that was purchased, and I have no idea where the road-- But I wanted this board to just be aware of what's happening. Headed in the right direction, but--
Is this the property you purchased from the bonds?
Yes.
Well, obviously, once we know more information, we will head in the right direction.
Sure. Sure. And my, my opinion is that, you know, you take your car to the service station, you don't let the mechanic start working on it till you figure out, that's where we're at right now, to figure out what's wrong.
Thank you.
I'd say thank you, but nobody likes a problem. But thank you.
Yes, that's, just for the board, that's the, that was the same thought I had. I've talked with Bill. Got Pathways involved as soon as we get some information on what Pathways is saying the survey looks like. I have reiterated to them, Mr. Warren has talked me about, and what he talked to you about. So I have them, have them looking into those boundaries, those deeds, and then doing a survey as well.
Any other public comment?
Dave Bofay, bringing to you a Budget Committee issue. So thank you for your brief attention. Attention. Alice.
Please don't do that. Please don't do that. That's not your role at this point.
Okay. Sorry about that. Voltaire, in the book Candide, Lampoon Blind Optimism, with repeated, with a repeated phrase, "In this best-of-all-possible world, absurd situations." As those of us with leadership experience in business, government, at all levels, and medicine, I look around and think that's most of us, know that contingency planning is a critical, is critical to sustain success. When the question of contingency planning for the possibility of default budget was raised at the Budget Committee for Town meeting last week, committee chair thought it was a good idea and said so. However, the town manager deflected it to you, the select board, with a statement that it would be a waste of time. Budget process is the translation of town and departmental priorities into monitoring tax and expenditure terms, so that we can all live by the same process on a year-by-year basis. While not all contingencies, such as the fraud last year, can be foreseen, many can. Consideration of priorities and response to possible, possible default budget should be undertaken. Thank you.
Would like to clarify that slightly, if I can.
Go ahead.
I did not say thinking about or planning for a default budget was a waste of time. He was asking if each department head has dove into what contingency planning would be. And I said that was more of a select board manager thing to work on. There's lots of thought processes to go through that. And like I said in the meeting, I was not going to spend hours and hours of staff time on hypotheticals, and we can have a high-level discussion at the select board. Once we figure out what the actual default budget is going to be, we have a number right now. And as I told the Budget Committee, that continues to change a little bit as we're getting finalized contracts and those types of things that have to be added in the--
The default budget is, is to some extent defined by the RSA, is it?
Yeah, the default budget is very defined by that.
Very detailed in the RSA as to what the default, default budget has to contain and not contain. Quite clear.
And if we end up in a default budget situation, I mean, we can hypothetical it going into it, but there'll be some really tough decisions to be made in March of, you know, what services need to go. If we want to pre-plan those, we can pre-plan those. But I think until you get that budget in front of you, and really see what it is, and, and know what the voters said, then we can, we can what-if it for a long, long time.
Betty Plickte again. I just want to say that the rationale for having turtles on our road is just that we actually have turtles that cross our road and not lollipops. Thank you.
Understood. Yes?
David Stewart, George Hill. I was wondering, has the town made any assurances to the Laramie Farms developers that there will be enough water for their development?
We have not made full assurances that they have full. We did tell them in the beginning, there's enough to build the 150 development, which is, I think, phase one. But there was enough there that we needed some more. We talked to them last week about bringing it on. I do believe we have enough right now to supply the whole thing. But what I told them is, that would really bring our contingency down of what we have, and that's not fair to our residents or taxpayers. Take it all for one development.
It just seems, from the data that we've heard from Dr. Theis, and the process I've seen going on, it just seems like putting a cart before the horse. There's not enough water here. There's been a lot of money and time spent by them, developers, the town, people going to meetings.
Yeah. From the analysis that we've done on our side, we believe we have enough water, but it's the engineers that have to decide that and do the real technical work.
Because what, what, the water we have now, people were on voluntary restrictions or limitations, right?
A while ago. But like I said, and I'll stand behind until I see something else from Jim Taylor, that we're using less water now than we did before. We've developed more water since then. Looking at developing more water right now. So, yeah. We look at that. We've talked about fix on McConnell well. We haven't got a price yet, so I don't know where he got the $200,000 that the cost in those filtration systems have rapidly come down. We'll be, we'll be looking at those. So there's lots of options out there, but it's something that I believe strongly that they need to bring a solution to the table.
I would have thought the town, $200,000 price tag to filtration system for the McConnell well?
I don't think that's right, but I don't know. That's what--
That's the number I've heard. If that is true, I would think, for that kind of money, the town should have done that before now. So that water is clean and available. So the people who run town water have plenty of water. Grow gardens. To be hon, if, I'd be, I'd be pretty mad myself if I didn't have water to water my garden, or even my landscape bushes, which are valuable assets.
Yeah, that's something when we learned about, we started looking into, but there's lots of things to think about when you do that. When you filter out uranium, you're now the proud owner of uranium that you need to get rid of. So there's lots of little details to look at when you're, when you're looking at those systems. So we're looking through them now. We think we may have found a really good viable solution out there. But as I said, we have not got a price yet on what that would be. And we're waiting for that. We're hoping to get it within the next month or two. And when I had my meeting with the developers on Friday, we did talk about that as a possibility of something that may be able to be funded, not by the town, but by them, if they're going to be coming in, they're going to be in a development that needs water.
All right. Thank you, Ed.
I'd just like to add on the voluntary restrictions. They're exactly what was said. They are voluntary. So there's no one telling you, you can't water your vegetable garden. I think that's a very important distinction. We are asking, if you go back to the 80s and the 90s, and Sesame Street asks you to sing, "Don't Waste Water," we're asking you, like, maybe don't water your lawn every day and make it in swamp. There are some people who have regular watering systems who come on. They are a lot more wealthy than I am, obviously. I went to the pond and got water for my gardens. But I think those, these are things that we can do as humans in a conservation-minded space, that we should be thinking about anyways. This isn't something that was done from a place of fear. This was to talk to people about the drought and to ask them to be careful. There was no mandatory restriction.
I would just like to add to that, that we did have a presentation by Jim Taylor at that time, too. A few years ago, when we had a drought, we actually seen the water table drop a little bit. This year, we had a worse drought. Our water table in our wells and in our aquifer did not drop at all. We put the voluntary restriction out, not knowing how long that drought was going to last. Just, you know, getting to the end, some people are starting to lose water in their wells. We know there's a bad drought. Let's not wash our driveway just to wash our driveway, wash our car just to wash our, let's put some voluntary restrictions on ourselves to help save some water. That's why we put it out. It wasn't because our wells were getting drawn down, or we were getting close to being dry. We actually seen very little drop in the--
My name is Lee Babcock, and I live on Crystal Lake Road. Just the comment about the turtles. My only complaint is it doesn't extend far enough in front of my house, because I think it's a great idea. And in reference to Mr. Reagan's comment about if, how far would this idea go if other neighborhoods wanted to have lollipops, or, you know, cartoons or whatever, my comment would, and without, you know, I mean this respectfully, but what a problem for a town to have if you want something whimsical and creative that creates town spirit. I, I'm all for that. The other comment I want to make is regarding all these issues about water. This is just a thought. It's not, it's, it's passe now because the plans are already made. But when we're thinking progressively into the future of big projects like Laramie Farms, I think it's called, if there was regulations put in place for landscaping to involve native plants, a lot of that would help the drought problem. Because native plants, when you incorporate native plants into landscaping, there is a lot, there are a lot of studies that show that there's a lot of decreased water demand, and it actually creates an environment that saves water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Lockett, Lockhaven Road. Sorry if I have trouble formulating my thoughts right. My blood sugar's low. So I had a question about the zoning, possible changes Saturday thing that happened here, which I attended. I heard, what I thought I heard was that the public at that meeting seemed to be positive on the changes. Did I hear that right? Or made comments, but I don't know if the comments were said in a--
Didn't say that. The only thing I reported was that there was a good feedback back and forth.
I thought it was good.
Good comments.
I thought you were saying good.
Feedback back and forth, and the planning boards getting to a point, something forward.
Just because at the table that I was at, it seemed 50/50 at best, but it was more not really thrilled about the changes in that. So I just wanted to make that comment about that. Also, with the zoning changes, the Laramie Farm, or discussed zoning changes at that meeting, Laramie Farms project, I had heard about another development, possibly on Main Street on 19 acres, of a whole bunch more houses for development, or some development. And then I had heard a while ago, something about Shed Street and another possible apartment complex. complex. So if we add this zoning possibility change in to create more density in the downtown area, the Enfield Village area, we're talking about, you know, our nice cottage town of 40-some-odd hundred people potentially exploding. And that makes me less inclined to want to spend the rest of my life here and retire here. Just sharing my thoughts, but, yeah, I moved because it was close enough to places convenience-wise, but was a rural town. And that's what I'm looking for about the rest of my life. Hopefully, it remains that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comments? Thank you all for attending. I'll move. We adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.